Good evening. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen being held in the Townhouse Auditorium on September, no, October 16, 2024 at 6:00 P. M. Please stand for the President, Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll get you some help down there. It'll be all right.
Drunk can get away with it.
Well, don't start dancing.
Is any, uh, this meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology. Is anyone else recording the meeting other than ourselves? Seeing none, we'll continue. First, we have the minutes of our September 30th, 2024 meeting, in which we discussed the Health IMA, which will probably be signing tonight. We talked about the special town meeting warrant. We drafted a letter to the Hampton Wilbraham Regional School District regarding the, uh, the lease. Uh, we okayed some food permits. And we'll talk about the Hamlet's Oversight. We pointed a member to the Hamlet's Oversight Committee, issued some one-day liquor permits for the event. Was it, was this Saturday? Was it this Saturday? And, uh, we know where some correspondence from the Hampton Wilbraham Regional School District regarding the resignation of Aaron Osborne. And they want to appoint someone to the committee to find a new replacement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
One thing on those minutes, uh, who's looking into what we talked about with the possible childcare for a town meeting? That was mentioned in those minutes.
Yeah, we're looking into that right now. I talked to Parks and Rec, and he might know some people to reach out to, so we gotta talk more about that.
October 7th, 2024, uh, we approved the Heart Springs contract, which has been successful for the Friends of the Senior Center. More discussion about this, uh, special town meeting warrant. We discussed Bill House 4885, the Health IMA, resigning election warrant, more food permits.
Without samples. Without samples.
Without samples, I might add. Good, thank you. And, uh, that's it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a meeting with everybody to talk about the town meeting warrant. Let's say you.
Well, thank you for having us. We need John, Heather, and all of us.
You guys need to call an order or anything like that first, or, I know you are posted for tonight, so.
If you'd like us to.
Yeah.
Call ourselves the order.
Yeah, but you're on TV now.
Because you're always in order.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to keep things in order all the time, John. We'll call, call the Hampton Advisory Committee to, uh, to order, what, six or four, October 16th.
Want to go right to the money articles?
Well, how about, how about status first, you know, where we stand? Stabilization amount, we have a free cash amount, and then that's what we're starting with.
We can start with, start with free cash and stabilization.
What was the free cash, nine?
Nine twenty-one, something like that.
Something like that. Stabilization right now is 1.89 million.
High yield?
It's actually, yeah. Uh, it, well, at the last town meeting, it was only 1.81. So, yeah, um, interest rates have been favoring us quite a bit.
Okay.
I don't know what more you want, what order you want to do this. And we have a new growth number from the assessors that's a rough estimate that's very encouraging. So I believe, I believe we're talking about 438,480 dollars of new tax money from the new growth. That was 28 million.
Yes, a preliminary estimate is 28 million.
And one, and one solar was how much?
About 17 million.
So I think typically with something like this, we talk about a target. We've had these meetings in the past where we, and Doug, you've always had your feeling, and Dick, same thing about what's to be expected for an increase in the tax bill or the tax rate. The town meeting increased the budget by X percent. Without any application, et cetera, it's going to go up by that. Do we have other things? Do we want to put some money away? What does the consensus of what this group is that the tax rate should go up? I'm not talking the tax rate, because they all talk about the tax bill as well.
Right, but the percentage increase.
Exactly.
I mean, ten, so can you guys share? You know, if you were to, I didn't know if you were going to go through article by article.
Well, I thought maybe if, you know, a goal at the beginning would be where we stand.
This is where I think, this is where I think we stand, based on these assumptions. Figuring about $300,000 from the numbers that Brian gave me at the fall town meeting, depending on the last article, you were winging it on 75 to 100 for, for town hall move. So figure worst-case scenario, 300,000 there. Kelly was able to give me the new growth number. If you applied all the free cash to the tax rate, and none of the water project that we authorized at a million and a half was applied for 2025, the tax increase would be 2.3 percent, 1602 net of any valuation changes. Obviously, values are going up, so the tax rate goes down, but we were talking about a two, three, 2.3 percent. Every $140,000 put on the tax rate is 1 percent. Every 140 in spending would go out as, is, is 1 percent. If we applied one-third of the approved water project, half a million, the rate would go up to, the tax increase would be 5.8 percent, or 1657. My personal opinion is we have to let the taxes go up. We've got too much coming down the line at this point. I would like to see that million and a half that we've already authorized, I'd suggest we split it three ways. Then we put a third of it on the tax rate, a third of it on stabilization, and a third of it for borrowing.
Going back to where we started, though, how much did the budget increase year to year at the annual town meeting?
743,000.
Thank you.
And we, before we had the new growth number, I was looking at already a 6 percent increase. You know, the new growth number saved us on that and gave us some breathing room.
Because the assumption.
New growth was like 150, maybe?
Yeah.
So that was able to absorb quite a bit of that, that budget increase.
Thankfully.
Right.
The operating, the operating budget went up. It was 743,000 in pound figures, which is about 4.7 percent. That's just the operating budget, that's independent of all the articles, the other articles. Um, so, I mean, my view is that we're, that's what we're looking at in terms of the regular operation of most of the town, 4.7 percent. It's, it's difficult to talk about inflation numbers with any specificity, given how fungible those seem to be. But it seems to me that we, we can't keep our rate down in that, you know, the two and a half or 3 percent range when we're spending 4.7 percent increase. But I'd like to see something less than 4.7 percent also. I think the town deserves to be rewarded for the reasonable physical management that it's, that it's displayed. Well, there's a reward to be had from that.
I just did the, the annual survey that I have to do that's based on, on September 30th for Hampton County Retirement on our full-time salaries, and we're 17 percent over last year on our full-time salaries. Now, that, that means, that's because we have some new positions. We also have, obviously, an increase in wages, and we had an increase in hours. So, and that's going to, so next year's Hampton County Retirement is going to be up 17 percent plus compound times 5 percent that they get anyway.
And not so people think it's like, so, the previous TA wasn't applied towards our retirement number, but Brian now is, so.
So, yeah, that, you know.
That's a big jump.
Difference, we had like five different people at town meeting, we got more extra hours, and, did we add a parking rec, too?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
As Doug says, the cost of the.
This year was 775.
Right, so we're going to be 850.
So. So you figure probably low twenties in terms of percentage increase. So that'd be like a 150,000 increase, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I appreciate the goal of, of being down around that 4.7, but we've got, again, we've got the water project, we've got, um, we've got the potential for a number of override projects. Um, you know, the seniors, and the firehouse, and whatever's going to happen here. So I'm just, I hate to see us, I mean, I'm as cheap as anybody, but cheaper than most, but I'm afraid that if we don't build a little bit of cushion in there, suddenly we're going to walk in here and have to do a 13 percent increase when one of those override kicks in, and oh, heck's going to break loose.
Dick, perhaps you could just explain that. I mean, we know, but if anybody's watching, where we talked before, it's important to keep that up, because you need to keep close to where your levy is. Otherwise, you have to spend, like you said, so much ketchup to it, you turn into an override situation. And that's what you're talking about here, that you have to keep the pace there, so that you allow yourself the capacity to do something later.
Well, the other thing is, if we can get, like, take this water project, leaving out the grant and the second phase at this point here, if we can get that paid off in two or three years, that would be about when some of the bonds might be kicking in on some of the larger capital projects. Having that half million come off, when we start paying that, is going to level things out a little bit. You know, it's, it's the spikes that, that kill us. You know, people can expect prices to go a couple, three, four, 5 percent. We've been certainly trained to deal with that in the last three years.
There was one point, probably about 12 years ago, that our debt load was about 10 percent of the budget.
Yeah.
And we brought it down to the four to five range, you know, which, if you look at the state, that's better than they figure in most communities.
Yeah, well, right, you know, I mean, right now, the, with the exclusion of the school debt, you know, we're, we paid 200, 216,000 this year.
For the police station.
Police station. So we've, and we've had no short-term borrowing at all. And fortunately, when the rates, interest rates have been high, we've been positioned to be, to have cash in the bank and not have to do borrowing.
Right.
And, but that's going to reverse within probably two years, I'm guessing. My crystal ball's a little lazy.
Do you remember when the police station comes off?
So we are in year six of a 20.
So we've got.
No. No, it's only been six years, or we have, or we're banning for a couple of years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And anything that we do, whether it be the firehouse, senior center, or anything like that, it's going to be two or three years. And from what I'm hearing, I want to push that, that bond out as far as possible.
Oh, you've got a lot, you've got a good rate on the police station.
Police station, but.
Right.
Right now, if we were to bond for another, for something, it would be over twice that. We were at a county association meeting today, and we had a financial advisor there talking to us. His name was Flynn, so I don't know how to trust him, from New Rochelle. But, um, you know, he was talking about if you've got any short-term borrowing this year, wait till June, because he's expecting four more cuts before the end of the fiscal year. And anything that you have, push out three years, that you have a choice on bonding on.
So all the small stuff, you do internal borrowing anyhow with the small stuff, right?
I haven't had to in a few years.
But you can't.
But, well, what'll happen is, I'll have to borrow this year, probably on the water project. I can't do an internal borrowing, keep it off the tax rate. So if you were to say, do what we said, and then borrow a half a million, then I'd be looking at May or June to get the, like, least, the lowest possible rate, but I have to borrow before the fiscal year in order for it not to go on the tax rate. Or against the free cash, I guess, at that point.
So the number for the town meeting articles at this point, and Brian, you talked about the fact that the TWB article is, if you want to say WAG, wild-ass guess at this point, right?
Yeah, I mean, the amount of money, the funds that we'll need between now and, let's say, the annual town meeting, we don't really have a good sense of that at this point.
Right.
Well, it's actually between now and July 1st that you'd be thinking, I suppose.
Yeah.
We don't have a sense of the scope of the move. Is it rehabilitation of offices? Is it hiring a moving company? Is it doing cosmetic?
Do you need before July 1st?
Sure.
Uh, yeah.
Starting January 1st, right, Don?
January 1st.
They, they'll pay everything up until July 1st, but we have access to the building if you want to do something, you know, in terms of.
Actually, that brings up a good point, that, Don, part of that money will cover utility costs, et cetera, as well, which we'll assume at that point.
Well, in July 1st.
Right. No, I'm saying January 1st, right?
No.
They're going to maintain, even though we're moving in, they're going to pay the utilities?
We're not, we're not moving in.
No, but we own the building, isn't it?
We own the building, the building, we don't own the building back until July 1st.
Okay, but we can go.
But they're going to give us access, so that we can plan for Ju, for July 1st.
Right, and make upgrades and repairs.
You know, if we have to upgrade something, you know, those.
Any major expense is going to be.
July 1st.
Is going to be July 1st with the annual.
Honestly, you know, usually my position, it's only 100,000 of this, you know, it's three-quarters of a percent of the taxes, so who cares?
Right, but again, that's a number I would say pulled out of thin air, but it's not a.
It's not a hard number.
No.
Not only 300,000 is, honestly.
Well, quite a bit is, I mean, the two fire, the fire department, the.
Subject to the voters.
No, no, but I mean, the rest are good estimates, they're solid numbers, ready to be voted on, yeah.
So, the water district project, if that got pushed off till next fiscal year, because at this point, I don't think we're going to be breaking ground until very close to then anyway, if anything, would that?
Here's my thought, the thought that kind of came to me on this, though, and Brian did it, did some spreadsheets on four different scenarios, on, on the two different grants, the ARPA money and all that. So right now, we're budgeting something like 100,000 dollars to do testing. We think that number will probably go up, because they're going to lower the standards and all that. If I had to borrow for the entire project, it's only 160,000 a year. It wouldn't take long for the lack of testing to pay off the borrowing. Now, it doesn't pay back the principal.
Right.
But given that interest cost versus that testing cost, I'd say, let's get the water project done as soon as possible and get out from under the testing costs.
But I guess my, my question is, even if we do get the funds for it, we're probably not doing anything construction-wise until next fiscal year.
My understanding is the only reason we haven't started Phase 1 is we don't want to hurt our grant applications.
Right.
And that was supposed to be pending notification fairly soon.
Still pending.
Right. Um, I don't see any reason why you couldn't at least start Phase 1 by the first of the year.
Well, my, my question is, would contractors do that type of work in the winter? So that's what my thought, I might push it off.
I don't know. I don't know the question, answer to that, but you've got an RFP process you're going to go through, it takes some time anyway. I would say, honestly, I think I'd ask for, I'd ask for Part 2 with the borrowing authorization, where, at this fall town meeting, I think it's on the warrant, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And so then, then your options are open. I mean, we know that you're not going to put, you know, 2 million dollars on the tax rate, whatever, we're going to find some way to pay for it. And the borrowing authorization means that the selectmen and the treasurer have pretty full reign over, over a time period and, and the method of borrowing.
Well, here's my other question. We talked before about the ARPA and the fact that we have a drop dead date on that money. Now, it has to be encumbered or spent by the end of the year, Brian?
Obligated.
By the end of this year.
So if we hear back from the grant, it all depends on the level the grant is giving us. Say we get the good grant, and now the ARPA money is available for any other use at that point, right? Because the good grant you're hoping for gets us close to, with the borrowing, close to 100 percent.
Or you could just borrow less, you know, and spend less tax money.
We could, too, but again, we can't do anything until we get that answer from whatever agency, two agencies that owe us an answer.
I understand, but.
The other thing, could you say, forget the ARPA, forget the ARPA thing and use the ARPA money to cover the TWB move?
But what, what, what do they mean by obligated?
So the, the federal definition of obligated in this instance is there's an order for supplies or services, or there's an actual contract in place for supplies or services. So, well, let's say hypothetically, we went out to bid in November for the water project, and we got bids back, you know, early December, we could enter into an agreement with the low bidder to, and that agreement would, would, would satisfy that obligation requirement.
So we would have things on that. I would be, is the political statement?
Can we use the ARPA money for the RFQ, though? Because I mean, that's, no matter what you're doing, even if the grant's paying for it, you need an RFQ.
The political statement I was going to make is I would, you've already told people that we're going to apply the ARPA money to the water district, unless that comes through and fully funds the whole darn thing. And you don't allow people to vote on appropriation for the town hall move, I don't think I'd want to be sitting up there if that was the case. I think that would come back and splash it. No pun intended, with the entire go-r.
Wow. Saving that one. Well, that was kind of the overview thing, basically, so now we're into article, so.
So the question would be is, for the finance committee and for the selectmen, is where do they, how, what do they want the tax rate to do?
I go along, my opinion, I go along with what Doug and I think you have said before, there has to be some, the word may not be consequence, but when you vote a bigger budget, there's a bigger bill to be paid with it. If it can be offset, which you've done a great job in the past, by using free cash or savings, that, that's great. But you can't expect to buy a more expensive car and have smaller payments for it. You're going to, it, it is what it is. So if you're saying the budget we voted was 5 percent higher than last year's budget, then you would expect the bill to be 5 percent higher. If we can mitigate that somehow by applying free cash and the fact that new growth is better, because you guys are out hunting for everything, that's great. Personally, I'd like to see it between two and three. That may not be you. You're saying, yes, it could happen, but that may hamstring us in the future in taking on bigger things down the road. So maybe the compromise is four. But I think over five, when you look at the tax bill and the way people are right now, a five-plus percent increase in your tax bill, I think is a lot to ask.
Yeah, I think that's too much.
Well, it's going to happen down the road. The 2.3 percent is without you taking any responsibility on the tax rate for the water project at all.
The 5.8 as well?
The 5.8 is, is the, is putting a half a million on of the water project.
And using the 900,000 in free cash for.
Oh, that was written in. That's all, that's all against the tax rate. We don't, we never save our free cash. We're now overhand.
But see, that gets matching, too. When you say the budget, when you say the budget went up 700, plus the articles, and people are going to say, well, you had 900 free cash, doesn't that take care of the increase in the budget? And the tax rate goes up 0 percent? And that's the, you know.
Look, there's a lot of moving parts.
I know that.
There's a lot of moving parts, and you really have to sit with somebody with, you know, with a pad of paper and scratch out these numbers to fully understand it. You know, the bottom line is that the town is, is in very good shape, you know, largely as, as a result of the, the good management of the town. I mean, we have a stabilization that's more than 10 percent of our operating budget. The rec, the state recommends 5 to 10 percent. We have, we have the new growth figure, which is the largest that I've ever seen. We have the free cash number that's close to the largest free cash number that I've ever seen. We also have some significant expenses that are staring us in the face that are, just a question of when they go on the rate. And it sounds as though, you know, the water, the water project, we're going to be able to spread and we'll be able to absorb that. It's the other, it's the other ones that are going to be larger. So I mean, I think in terms of where we are today, if, if we project out a couple of years, I think that that's the best we can do, given all the uncertainties. And, and it seems premature to, to put 500,000 of the water project on the tax rate, when we still have a couple of these questions outstanding with regards to the grant and what funding might come from on that. I mean, I, given my view, I mean, I don't want to, we advise, we have not discussed this, these are my personal views, these are not necessarily advisories to you.
John, I want to answer your question. If we apply 900,000 dollars, how come the tax rate is, is not zero?
This isn't my question, this is a, I.
It's a general question, yeah.
It was the question you posed.
Yeah.
The reason is, because we, we applied 700,000 dollars to free cash last year to bring the tax rate down to that, or 600, whatever it was.
And the year before.
And every year.
But that's, I'm, and that's what the explanation I'm looking for, if anybody watches us, both people, if you will.
Right. So the difference is only a couple hundred thousand dollars spread in the fact that we have a little bit of free cash this year. And it's a couple, you know, it's, mm, 200, 200, 270,000 dollars more in free cash than we had last year, something like that. But, because we're not starting from zero. You know, if we had zero free cash, we would be hurting puppies, because we're just addicted to using that at the end of the year. You know, unfortunately, Cliff goes and prints up all that free cash in the basement.
If I could just ask Cliff, does this free cash include that, it was about a 300,000 dollar grant for the bridge, or, or is that still outstanding?
Well, we, now we have a new grant for the bridge.
Some of it's outstanding, I believe, right?
It was outstanding.
Yeah.
Through, pardon me, through Brian's forensic work, we're able to get the state to give us that money. Now, it came in after July 1st, but Jim Padolak went in and looked to see that we were getting that money, and he allowed it against.
Really?
The free cash, yes. So that was 300,000 dollars right there.
He cannot retire. He cannot retire.
On October 1st.
It's a new era.
Exactly.
So that's what the deceiving part about is, the deceiving part about the free cash is that number. It's an old number that we kept getting hit with, but now it's cleared up, so we don't get hit with it this year. We don't have that same thing carrying forward.
It's a one-time, yeah.
It's a one-time hit, you know, so.
So, Don, what do you think, or do we want to get a couple of scenarios, like, if you did this, the, the jump is this much, if you do that? Again, without that answer from the grant program, it's really still a little bit up in the air here, because that's, you could say, that's 500,000 dollars right there. If they fund that grant, that changes everything you're talking about on the water project. So, Dick?
The best-case scenario, we still got a shortfall, didn't we?
No, best-case scenario was both grants came through and we were actually more than we needed.
Right.
If we used ARPA.
Yeah.
Without ARPA, I thought.
That's assuming we were using ARPA.
If we used ARPA, right?
Yeah.
Okay. But we've got to make sure that ARPA's obligated by the end of the year.
So, if I could just, if I could just, I did reach out to Mallory Sullivan at the Royal Affairs Office, and we should expect answers by the end of this week on both of those grants.
Okay.
He had no more details other than that, but, so we should know.
We have a public hearing next week.
Yeah.
That would be timely if they're able to come through with an answer.
Actually, I'm sorry. We'll know the answer on the one-stop grant. The E, the emerging, emerging contaminants grant is on a different timeline, that's the 1 million dollar grant. I'm optimistic about that, I can't guarantee it, but we're on to the, the second phase of the application, so.
Which is the one-stop grant for 500?
2.2 million, I think it's on the sheet.
That's for Phase 2, right?
Yeah. It would include the entire project, but it would not include vertical construction costs. So it wouldn't include essentially the pump. So it wouldn't include essentially the pump house, but it would include everything else.
But we have the pump house covered under appropriations.
Well, what are, what are, what are vertical construction costs?
Buildings, so they won't pay for buildings.
So if we keep it?
Keep it underground.
That's what I thought. If you've got both, no, no, go back to your, your thing. If we got both grants, you don't need the ARPA.
If we, if we had both grants, that would be 3.8.
You look like you're, no, according to the thing, if you got both grants, you'd be well over the 3.8 you're looking at for the program.
Are we counting in the appropriation from spring or is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's including the, the debt authorization? Then yes. You would not.
Technically need it. But go back to Dick's point.
Yeah.
You said you were going to, so you should, right?
I mean, the best case scenario is, what was that one? That was funding for, that was his funding scenario for, so that's the, so even that one, even that one, we're using some of the appropriation money. Nothing covers everything, right?
I'm just pulling it up. Well, because it's only the 1 million plus the, the grants will not cover the entire project, if that's the question.
Well, we're going to use some of the appropriation, but I guess the question was, do we use all of it? And as John said, the, the grants plus the appropriation would cover the, the project, right? Is that what you were saying, John?
Right.
But if, or do we, or do we, the borrowing authorization from spring, or do we use the ARPA to minimize the obligation?
Yeah, if, if you used all three, if you used both grants and the ARPA, you still have a little bit you'd have to put on the tax rate, but not that much.
Right.
I mean, you know, got less than $100,000, which would be kind of nice. But it sounded like what we're saying, that if we don't target that ARPA money in the next two months.
Right.
It goes away. So what else are you going to use it for?
What I'm saying right now, the RFQ would be, because that's, no matter what we do, you're going to need that. Why not? And why should that hurt us for the grant? Even if we've got a grant, they're going to require you to get that RFQ.
Yeah, it sounds like we should at least start on that. And is, does it make sense to authorize the second part, do an RFQ for both and have them bid them separately?
It seemed like it'd be a cough saving because they would use a lot of the same data to develop it.
Yeah. I would think so.
I think you would bid about the same time and have phase A as the, as the, the base bid and then phase B as the, the ad alternate.
Ad alternate, sure. And so.
But we can only enter into that contract once we have, we can only accept ad alternate, the ad alternate bid as, but we need an appropriation or an authorization.
Well, that's why.
For those funding, which is why we would need to.
If, if, if the voters trust you, there's no risk in appropriating, you know, in authorizing borrowing at this meeting for this, for phase two. Now you've got, if, you know, if the money comes streaming in from, from the state of the feds, then.
We can also adjust that appropriation amount in next week, hopefully, when we have that one stop information, right?
Yeah, until the, yeah, the, the, the amount will be set by the motion that's made at a town meeting.
But in terms of clarity for advisory next week, basically they're reading it and still, as you said, more information allows us to fine tune the answer.
And just.
We don't need more.
Anything, nothing on the water project affects this year's tax rate, except how much you decide you want to put on this year's tax rate. You know, none of, nothing we do at town meeting affect, with the water district affects this year's tax rate. Just like nothing with the senior center affects this year's.
Unless we choose to.
Unless we say, but 500,000 on.
You don't do that at a town meeting. We do that in a smoke filled room.
Have a cookie.
And the year before. Any smoke filled rooms.
So is it too early for us to actually have a target figure then for what the tax increase would look like? I mean, I, I, we're only talking a matter of days for a public hearing, but it sounds like we may actually have more information.
Well, I think, you'll go back to Brian saying, the special town meeting is looking at $300,000 roughly, right, Brian? Between, and the warrant articles.
Yep.
That could come out of free cash, leaving you $620,000 to do something with.
This is a mechanical exercise. Personally, I would prefer if we raised and appropriated anything and then just applied all free cash to the tax rate. Sadly, nobody likes what I, what I say on that case.
No, no, that's, that's, that allows your levy, that, I like that.
No, so it's, in, in the end, it makes no difference. Historically, we like to do transfers because it, it sounds like we're not spending money. You know, we're just taking out this available pa, pile. But in the end of the day, all it is is a math problem. We have exactly the same tax rate.
I agree, but it also, your levy looks different because you did raise an appropriate per se instead of transfer.
How do you portray that to the public though, to get them to understand that? Because it's very, it's very difficult.
I don't think it is, but I, I think it's very simple that we're going to take this pile of money and use it to reduce the tax rate at the end. And it, it makes no difference which method you use. I don't think that's that hard a concept, but.
New math versus old math. New math versus old math.
Okay.
Well, the details, the details can get a bit consuming, but the concept is to use the money as efficiently as possible, minimize any, any spikes in the rate in coming years. And that's essentially what we've always tried to do. This year, it seems like we have a few more considerations than we typically do, but we also have more available than we typically do, so.
You gave us a spreadsheet, well, you gave us an option sheet, if you will. Just like you said, if we took the 300,000 for the fall town meeting, the new growth, the 900, didn't talk about the water project, you had roughly 2.3% increase.
That is correct.
If we took said 500,000 from the, on the water project, but used ARPA at the first 500,000, that, instead of the 500 you talked about bringing up the 5.8, would that get us into the four?
Because the project's more than a million and a half.
I understand.
So we've all, we, we, we've appropriated a million and a half. I'm assuming that we're going, you need to spend that because you already took the ARPA money off the top.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, you did. The total project cost.
No, no, not for phase A, we didn't. Phase A, the 1.5 was worst case if we use no ARPA, but we plan on using ARPA in that 1.5.
Right, because we had talked about lowering it down to like nine something at one point. But then we, we kind of didn't get sense.
But we said, but we said, look, if the ARPA wasn't available, we got to make sure we cover the bases. But it could be lower.
This document says 1.671, 225.
Right.
Is what phase one is going to cost us.
It's going up, yeah.
Okay, so we appropriated a million and a half. So obviously, in my mind, well, it's 171 and change out of the 275 in ARPA. There's only 100,000 slush there.
I don't know where the, I don't want to say project creep, but I mean, we were at 1.5 last spring.
So if you look at the breakdown from time bond on phase A and phase B, they separate out construction, phase engineering costs, so construction administration costs. So that, that total project cost, it, it's a crude way to do it, but I split that 468, 450 in construction administration costs and added half to phase A and phase B because we'll need to pay those.
They had two contingencies too, I think.
And they had, it, there's contingencies within phase A and phase B, and then they had this agreement, 174 and 40, but those, that's mostly paid already, so I, I took that out. But there are that construction administration costs that are on top of that phase A and phase B that weren't included, so.
That's where the 160.
Let's make this simple. If you're not comfortable with the 5.8 that I'm, that I projected here, and remember, these are all estimates. You know, we get swings here and I don't want Don coming back and yell at me because his tax bill went up 5.9% instead of 5.8%.
Well, he's got that new paving coming, so I mean, the value should be right up.
He's got a new road coming.
We, we're, we're working with 2.3 if we do nothing other than spend the 300,000 at town meeting and apply. Every 140 is 1%. How much do you want to spend? That's the simple question, what's your target? And we'll just plug the numbers to get as close as we can.
What would the advisory like to advise?
We, as a group, haven't discussed it. I mean, tonight is our first meeting on this warrant. You know, and I, I wouldn't be comfortable saying advisory is recommending X without having a little bit more discussion on that.
But I think this has been a good forum to explore our options at this point. I don't think we need to. And Don, you know, called us to say, let's get all the ideas out on the table.
Well, you know, as long as we have a number by 6 o'clock at town meeting.
Well, I think the assessors going back, they're going to get that new goal up to 600 by the week.
No, actually, that's all I need. That was not going to be. Does the board, does the board have a, a figure in mind? I mean, have you, the number?
We haven't kicking around.
No, we haven't, we haven't discussed it either.
You're in the same boat.
We're hearing the same thing, you know.
This is really the first time everybody's really seen numbers.
And based on what we're hearing, you could probably throw out, say, well, 2.3 is probably a little too low, 5.8 obviously too high. I mean, are we looking at four, four and a half?
Obviously.
Well, that's why I was throwing out the four. I think the four, based on what you passed at town meeting, you can't not expect the budget to go up. You spent more money. The tax rate has to go up to compensate that. We can mitigate that increase by good use of what we've done here.
More to come next week.
Article 1, 2, 3, and 4, we can skip. No money there.
Although we'll have to stipend for the, for the second will go up. Up to more?
We just divide by five.
Oh.
Oh.
They'll all be working with.
Same money.
Now Don's voting against it right now. He needs that.
Five is, the five isn't costing any money, right? That's, that's a, you know, six isn't.
That's going to bring money in.
Seven, insurance account. Where, where are we talking there? 90,000?
I have 95 on that.
Uh, it's supposed to be 90,000.
Yeah. And 95 there.
It's in health insurance costs.
That was, that was additional health benefits, Dick, is that what that was?
Health, life insurance, health, life insurance change.
Yeah, I can send you out a breakdown of that. It's based on the current rates and our current enrollment numbers and expenses from posters.
Recap when he, you know, the number.
Just set the rates for the service.
That one there, yeah.
Plans. Fortunately, I'm familiar, but we have seen increases in that. Apparently the, like, they've added a lot more prescription costs onto the insurance companies. So they're averaging like a $50 a month for the medics, any plus. Around a little bit, but we've only got about four, we've only each other's plans.
Does that kick in? Should this go up more then?
The police department contractual education incentive, $7,500. Article nine is the cemetery commission, they need, they need money for tree and erosion control, $7,500.
We're keeping, we're keeping that as a warrant article, Brian, not adding it to their budget line, right?
Um, it's written as it's adding it to their budget line currently.
We want to increase that. Do we want to make it a permanent increase? I thought it was a one time thing.
Okay, so what you're saying is?
I thought it was a yearly.
I thought he added, I thought he asked.
Increase it.
If we can keep it as a warrant article, they don't have to spend it by July 1st either.
But are they going to keep it as a maintenance, for maintenance? It's going to add to their line for maintenance?
Yeah, but I think they should discuss that the annual.
That whole thing will look confusing. They've got two different perpetual care accounts and a revolving fund and an expense account. And I'm not sure anybody's got a full grasp on what's available for them.
Why wouldn't it go into the expense account?
Well, it's the only place it could.
Maintenance.
Unless it's an arse to the loan article.
Right. Like say they have.
It went into the maintenance account for lawn care.
That's a, that is an expense account. Maintenance is expense.
But I would think if they're doing erosion control, they're not doing it every year. We're going to fix the problem and then we're done.
Right.
Did cemetery come in and speak with you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did. Okay, because we had a rather abbreviated discussion with them this year because of their membership issues. I mean, my only reservation is, you know, is building a $7,500 increase into an operating budget without having discussed it.
I think it's a one time thing because you're talking about erosion control doing something to.
And then you fix it, right.
And then next year, if they need to make a more update, as Craig said, to their, they make that case for that with everybody.
With advisory.
Well, they have enough money in their perpetual care account to handle it.
Yeah, but is, is, does the perpetual care account allow that or is it just, or is it just for certain grades?
I thought it had stipulations.
Or is it interest only or?
From the perpetual care is for use at the cemetery commission, and we have two of those. We have the perpetual care account and we have the old bums that account for 2,000 that we've had since I've been here. And those all have generated at least $7,500 right now.
But are those, you leave the principal loan, do you expend the interest type thing?
Principal.
Oh, okay.
In Cliff's accounting, there's two separate expendable, I expect, numbers.
Okay. Anyhow, my, my point was just, I think that should be a separate warrant article, not a change there, operating to their line.
I agree with that.
They don't have the money already.
Senior center, how much?
Make their case, I think it said six, it was 5.962, post that presentation.
That's going to go on bands anyway, right?
Rounding it up. It was 5.9.
You're looking three years at least.
2,000.
What do you want?
I would try to push it that long, yes.
John, it was around that, right? 5.962, something like that, yeah.
What number do you want in the motion? 5.9?
Yeah, I think Gary might, Gary or John's got that number. Not to exceed.
Okay, water district, we have the, we're going to do 2 million?
I think at this point, I think that's the best path forward would be to seek a borrowing authorization for 2 million, but we may hear.
We hear different.
At least that one stop grant by the end of the week.
So we might amend that before advisory next week.
You may have lied to you too.
Could have. Let's follow up with her tomorrow, just to.
So, does that need a warrant? I mean, you already, we did the 1.5, which we said we could fit inside the levy, we didn't need to get a vote for it. If we do this two on top of that, is that going to require a?
That depends on how long we take to pay it off.
Okay, let's ask them.
Yeah, so it's what we put on the tax rate, not what we, what we authorize. Like I said, if we take, if we borrow the whole 1.5, nothing goes on the tax rate, doesn't affect the levy limit.
Right, but if you borrow the full 3.5?
Nothing goes on the tax rate.
Until you do.
Leave it off inside.
The interest goes back on a recap, that's it. And like I said, I'd love to have that 100,000 plus in testing money go away.
We, that's a two thirds vote?
Yeah, because it's borrowing.
So we're going to have two articles in a row, ask him to borrow $8 million?
Yeah.
Eight million? Oh, two, total, total.
4.9, sorry.
Okay. 10,000 for the fire station asbestos. 10. Article 13, the generator.
Don, I look into this. For $4,000, you can get a real long extension cord and tie it to the generator over here if you go to town hall.
Can we just dig that? Can we really do that, though? Just dig it and?
Technically, you could, yeah. I mean, no, you worry about the drop. I mean, you're talking probably at least two out wire.
Allze knows this. In August of 2021, they came to us and said we needed a generator. We approved it. We spent $35,000 ARPA money in March of '22. They said it was going to be delivered in October '23. It was delivered. The blank thing has been sitting there since October. I have 80 emails asking when we're going to get it done, and I've got 81 different answers about, we need a, we need a, we need an engineering study. So we spent 6,200 bucks on that for some guy to tell us that you needed a schematic. Well, no fricking kidding, right? Now we have, now we have a stamped schematic. The electrical inspector doesn't know what to do, the building inspector doesn't want to know what to do, the fire commission, the fire chief doesn't know what to do. So my, my thing is, I say, we saw the goddamn thing. And let's say, good luck, because we've been in water for three years anyhow, so what difference does it make? Let's say 50,000 bucks. I just see the emails. I ask a question. I ask a question. What's the status? I don't know. Oh, I talked to building inspector. What did he say? He says, talk to the electrical guy. I talked to the electrical guy. I don't know. We need a schematic. No, we don't need a schematic. Didn't, didn't we have a plan that they were going to pull the wire in the, in the highway that was going to pay the cement? What happened to that?
This 50,000 is, will, so we went out to bid for this project, right?
Yeah, $48,962.
Yep. Just for the electrical work. Well, I'm sorry, that included electrical work and the excavation and the pad work. So now we take the pad work out, the excavation work out, but now we need to put it out to bid because it's over $10,000.
Well, guess what? We may have electronic voting, but I'm a no vote on that one.
There goes, there goes the mystery.
Now, what number are we looking at? 15?
15, that's, yeah, 15. I, I don't think it will be that much, but.
Costs 35,000 for the thing, it's costing us 50,000 to install it, plus we paid 6,200 for a guy to tell us we needed 50,000.
Actually, no, Don.
That is.
You're telling me the wire to this one isn't?
That is the price that, that was returned, was the 48,000.
For that money, we could buy an F-15 with a generator built into it.
That's right, they just plug it in what we need.
We get a long extension cord.
All right. Buy a garage door that you could open by hand.
That's my story. I'll be at the advisory committee to speak on that issue. All right. This is the guest of, Article 15.
I, that's.
Oh, you don't know that's a.
I'm joking, that's.
Article 14, 20,000 for, why 20,000? Oh, because we want to get 400 of them.
Yep. It's around 18 and some change.
And then we rent them to other guests.
Just a, some question, but why are we buying them before we test them?
We, we, we took a testament this meeting.
Yep, we got to vote for.
We're renting them at this meeting.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah.
But you're renting them, and we're still using them, and we're voting on whether to buy them.
Yeah, but what if we don't like them? We don't have to exercise this article. We can just, you know, okay.
We just renting, we just renting them for one meeting.
Right.
No, I know that, but.
He's asking, why are we?
It's just a dumb question.
Why are we purchasing them if we haven't finished the meeting yet that we're renting?
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, but we don't have to. We're just authorizing the purchase if we like it.
They don't even know how many they're giving you back when they walk out the door.
Their GPS tracking.
We've already voted for 400 of them.
We don't have to do it, though, right?
We don't have to do it, right.
It comes through our public hearing, so, all right? No, I'm sure it's just me. No, because I had the same question, Frank, then.
Sure.
All right, more to come.
Let's see, Article 15, that's a shot in the dark.
One quick point, and probably on 14. Look, the other option would be to say, okay, we'll rent them again in the spring and put the article in the spring and say, we've got some experience there to do it, which is always a fallback for the board at that point because the rental cost was 10?
Two rentals is going to equal the purchase.
I know that, but if people aren't coupled with it, you know, we rent again.
No, the rental wasn't 10, was it?
No, 4,500.
The rental was 4,500.
Right. Although we may need more for the spring, but either way. So we always have that option.
20, 20K.
Yeah, 18 and some change, I think.
I know when the whole budget is a little piece of dust.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, 20,000 here, 20,000 there. That's up to somebody.
Thank you, Senator Dixon, whatever.
Article 15, the guest.
At this point, yeah.
I mean, what do we need to do there?
Well, the biggest thing will be whether the spring cords are needed or not, but this really won't cover that.
All right. Well, this isn't going to, this, this is just from here to July. To the town, actually, to the town meeting, because at the town meeting, and annual town meeting will know what moving costs are, what renovations and everything that got to be done, right?
Yep.
So I don't know if 100,000, if we need 100,000, because I'm trying to figure out what we're doing. We can look at the space, we can.
Yep.
Well, aren't there, the two bathrooms on the southern side are not ADA, correct? So we, the ones on the, to the left of the school. So this could potentially upgrade those and get that work done before people move in.
Yeah. It could do painting, it could do ceiling tiles, it could do any furniture modifications that are needed. That's assuming that we have access and then, yeah, access to the, access to the building. It's assuming we can have access to the building to make those modifications after January 1st.
The security in the door key is going to be significant.
Right. We don't know if any of the internet infrastructure is staying behind, the Wi-Fi.
Right, and I talked about potential for more internal doors to allow sexualization for different use, different hours of use.
Yeah.
So, library wanted to have night hours, we could like close off office.
You got library, you got parking wreck, and you got town hall, or all different schedules.
Right.
Plus, apparently, that performance space, the cafeteria will sometimes be used for other things.
Yes, right.
So we need to have, be able to do that. But there are a lot of internal doors. They just may need to go locked.
Maybe we need something, right, exactly.
What about janitorial?
And we've got the whole fire escape.
Very responsive.
Oh, Edith's to get to that.
Fire sprinklers, yeah. We need, we need compliant exit lights. There's a number of things, we just need to finalize that list.
Are you comfortable with that?
I, I think this is going to be low.
Okay.
But overall, I think it's.
100,000. Well, it's good. We're going to, because we're going to get 50,000 from the generator to go over there later on.
Yeah, what's going to cost to install a generator?
We have a generator.
We can just bring it. Now, we'll move this one over. My gosh, yeah.
We're going to move this.
We got to decide what you're doing with this building, too.
At some point, yep.
Okay. Community preservation, that's for the scoreboards, right? 20,000. The next 17 is no, no money articles, so.
Almost 17, almost could have gone with the other two articles. It's all related to the EV.
Yeah, that EV, right. And this was a moratorium on the battery storage.
This is in zoning or general?
This is zoning.
So two-thirds.
Two-thirds on that one.
This is a proposal coming from the zoning board of appeals for.
Planning board. Planning board. So, there we go. Then we got the transfers, right? Unappropriately available cash. 20, general stabilization, putting in and taking out, right? Easy. In and out.
Can I complicate it for a second?
Yes.
Thank you. So for seven, eight, and nine.
I'd be disappointed if you didn't.
So for seven, eight, and nine, for example, is that raisin appropriate, or is that available funds?
Yes.
I, I don't remember how the discussion.
We didn't, we didn't.
At the end, it doesn't matter.
Right, but for the motion, it does.
I understand.
Because it needs to come from somewhere, so.
I understand. I like raisin appropriate. Traditionally, we have done transfer from unappropriated available funds.
That was a good Don answer.
So I guess you.
We're not there yet, we're not there yet.
Customarily, it's on a free cash.
Okay.
For, for the special meeting, which is neither.
For any additional amounts.
Thank you.
For any additional amounts, it's typically been.
It is cash.
Available funds, unappropried available funds. Okay.
It just needs to go more.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
What else you got?
That's it. It's not complicated.
Thank you, everyone. See you Monday night, what time?
We're meeting, we're going to meet ahead of that, I think we'll close at 6:30 if I remember correctly.
Yep. We're going to meet at 6.
For which? He's talking about the.
Advisory. Next Monday.
Yeah, we're over regular 6 o'clock.
Our meeting's closed.
What? Busy, busy people.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Take a cookie, hit your server.
Excess and deficiency. Oh, that's the.
Gotcha.
All right, next item is the TW lease update. TW lease. Have we all sat on that?
Yeah, I sent out the, the edited version that the school committee had agreed to, and with your approval, I will send that to the district for signing, I think we talked about at their next school committee meeting.
They're going to be at the school, they're going to be at Thorndale-Burgers on the 24th. So that'd be nice to get that done there.
Do you want to sign it at that? Are you planning on attending that as well? Do you want to sign it before? Do you want to sign it after?
I think we should sign it there.
I think we should sign it there. We can post, we can post the meeting, and then we can go sign it there. It'll be there in 10 minutes.
And they'll give you the keys, and you'll be fine.
We'll find your way out.
Get out of our building.
So I'll send that.
And this, and this incorporates what we talked about last week. It took out all those things that we didn't like.
Yep, like, they can take back the building anytime they want?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's gone.